Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to all of those of you that are in chambers tonight and to all that may be watching us on our public access television. This is the Monday, July 22 regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterloo City Council. Madam Clerk, if you could start us off by reading the roll, please.
Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Getty?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Very good, thank you. If all of you would please join me in standing for just a moment of silent reflection or prayer. Our pledge of allegiance tonight is going to be led by Ms. Sandy Greco, the Superintendent of Traffic Operations. Sandy, please.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may be seated.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm confused. Mr. Hart?
I'd like to make a motion to approve an amended agenda, and that amendment is to delete item number four of the agenda and add resolution accepting an amount of $1,500 by that company. Also, I'd like to amend number seven to change the wording. I need to read that whole thing. And also amend number 11 to change to show the amount of the contract. And also with the approval of the amended agenda, I move that we approve the minutes of July 15 regular session.
Second.
Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding either? Answer the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Michelle? Are you here tonight? God bless you. Michelle Timire has some information for us on the Blackhawk County Fair.
Yes, thank you for putting me back on the agenda tonight. I do appreciate that.
It was a struggle, but we got it on there.
Good, I'm glad you did that. Thank you also. Normally, we'd have a young person standing here, one of our Blackhawk County 4-Hers, but they're actually getting everything ready tonight at Catal Congress for the fair that starts on Wednesday. Many of you may not know, we have a fair here in Blackhawk County. People get confused about where that is, when it is, and such, get us confused with Catal Congress, but we do actually have the Blackhawk County Show here in, at Catal Congress, beginning this next Wednesday. And it's really a showcase of all the FFA projects in the county as well as 4-H. We've teamed together, and it's really an educational fair. And it's one of America's best youth development programs. I think you'll agree that 4-Hers are ones that show exemplary citizenship, leadership, and really great model citizens for all of us. So, we'd like to invite you out to the fair. We have the traditional livestock show, non-l livestock shows, but also this year we've added some other educational type things. On Thursday, we're going to have Ag Day. We've got many community organizations coming in and exhibiting, talking about all the importance of Ag to our economy. On Friday is STEM Day, science, technology, engineering, and math, many hands-on kinds of things for our kids to do, so we invite you to come as well. Saturday is Move-It Day, so if you need a little move-in on between 10 and new, come by, and we're going to have folks from the YMCA, YWCA trying to get everybody physically active along with our Blue Zones folks. So, we invite you to come. We also have a blood drive going on. I know you guys give blood all the time, but this is real blood, so... The American Red Cross is teaming with us, and we're doing a blood drive on Friday from 10 to 2 at Pepsi Pavilion, so we ask you to do that, come there as well. We've got a lot of free kids' things to do. I've got some brochures here, I'll leave on the podium, so, or we can pass them around, whatever works best. And there is free admission and free parking, so you don't have to worry about that when you come in to the fair. I'd like to thank the mayor, he will be there doing celebrity read on, I'm not sure which day that is, Thursday or Friday. Check the schedule. Yeah, you are. Also like to thank Cheryl, the Waterloo Public Library has chosen all the book titles for us, and has put together a great group of books, so we'll have a reading corner there for our young people as well. So, come and join us at the fair. Any questions at all? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle. Thanks for coming. Very good. Something really special tonight that we get to do next, counsel, and ladies and gentlemen, Rochelle Hendricks is in the audience. Rochelle, why don't you just come through the gate there and come on up? Let's just kind of stand right here so that everybody can see you. Turn around, and the camera's right out there so that everybody can see you. You know, God works in strange ways sometimes. I think you'd agree with that, Rochelle.
Yep.
And, you know, we don't always know what's in store for us. And sometimes people are in situations where you've got, you know, relatively ordinary people that rise to the occasion and do extraordinary things, heroic things, at times. And there was an afternoon in June, back down at the riverfront, at the amphitheater, when a young boy was just being a young boy, was playing in the water down next to the river on the steps down there, had a babysitter that was up with another young'un, the way I understand it, and this six-year-old, I believe...
Yep.
...got caught up in the river. The river was high back then, and it was up over the lower bank there at those areas. And whether the river swept the little young'un off of the platform, or he slipped and fell, or he just didn't realize there was a drop-off, we don't know, but the young'un went in the river.
Yep.
And the babysitter saw this and jumped in after him...
Yesterday.
...and was able to grab hold of him, but there was nothing else to grab hold of, and the babysitter couldn't get to the shore. Rochelle was there, by the grace of God, and she had an opportunity to watch and scream or yell or do nothing, look the other way, and she didn't do any of those. She went to the water immediately, I don't think without any hesitation, and was able to get down to the river in time to get folks out of the water before, very shortly, they were within not too many feet of going over the dam. So, if that would have happened, things could have turned out totally different than they did, Rochelle. So, God bless you. I've got a little certificate that I feel inadequate, to some degree, that this is all that we're doing for you, other than giving you really our heartfelt thanks. This is a certificate of heroism presented to Rochelle Hendricks by the City of Waterloo, Iowa, on this 22nd day of July 2013, in recognition of your heroic actions of rescuing a child from the Cedar River on Thursday, this Thursday, June 20... Oh, no, it was Thursday, June 27, 2013. So, please accept that, Rochelle, and again, our heartfelt thanks for you taking the actions that you did and stepping up and truly, I believe, saving at least one life that day. Without your actions, that could have turned out totally different. So, God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Rochelle, as I always tell folks that are guests at our city council meetings, when you come and get something at the beginning, you're welcome to stay and get a little civics lesson if you'd like, but you don't have to.
(laughing).
Feel free to leave at any time, you're not going to offend anybody if you were to do that. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Mr. Hart?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, place, and file and approve the consent agenda, items 1A through B12. Also with the approval of the consent agenda, I move that we pay our bills, which will be read by our finance chair.
The bills this week are $3,503,108.54.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
I would need to abstain on a payment of $159,364.11 to Schmidt Telecom Partners for the new phone system, otherwise I would yes on all the rest.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good. Consent agenda passes. Item number two, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Cole?
I think we have Mr. Preglar here.
Oh, we do. Mark, you know, I'm just so used to seeing you out there. You come so often that I skipped over you. My apologies. Mark, actually, we have two appointments today, two new appointments, to the Human Rights Commission. Andrea Delitt, I believe, Delitt, okay, is one, and Mark Preglar is our other one. And, Mark, please stand up so we can get your mug on television there so that everybody knows. Mark is very active in the community, very active with the Landlords Association, and is just an all-around good guy. I'm very pleased that you stepped forward, Mark, and are going to help us out and volunteer your times and your services and your talents to our Human Rights Commission, so...
Thank you, Mayor.
...you are more than welcome. And Carolyn, thank you for letting me know. Very good. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
How about now if we take item number two, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number two is a motion to approve the request of Katrina Keys of 9, 32 West Third Street, permission to drive a motor vehicle for the purpose of carrying passengers, and that's an appeal on denial of application for permission to drive a motor vehicle for the purpose of carrying passengers.
Aye?
Technically, it should have been a hearing, but she's not here, so I'd like us to vote down the motion. Not be denied.
Okay, let's have a second.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. And Susie, maybe if you could, this almost looks like one of those worded-to-the-negative things again, maybe if you could kind of explain what we have here?
Well, it's actually, this is to the positive, because it's to approve her request to appeal, so I would like it to fail.
Okay.
Based on the fact that she has an extensive criminal history and the police department recommended denial. I typically don't go against the police department if they recommend denial, and so I denied it, and her action is to appeal it, which she certainly has the right to do, but she's...
She's not here, too?
That's her.
Okay.
Did we get it from you?
Are you Ms. Keys?
Did you see it?
No, okay, sorry.
Ms. Delitt.
Oh, Ms. Delitt.
Thank you.
Oh, I've been waiting for you.
Okay, I'm sorry for being late.
That's quite okay. I'll back up one agenda item, though, and we just recognized Mark Preglar, who's sitting behind you, as a new member of the Human Rights Commission, but you weren't here at the time, so thank you for stepping forward and volunteering your time. Yeah, please do, stand up, your time and your talents to be a new board member for the Human Rights Commission. We appreciate it very much, and we always need people to volunteer their services, so thank you for stepping forward. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hart?
Do have a question. Did we, we received information previously, because can you just refresh your memory about effort? I can't remember.
I typically don't give out the criminal history unless the applicant wants to appeal it and wants to show up and go through their criminal history with us. I do have it here.
And so, since this appeal, though, we have not gotten any new or additional information to cause us to rethink the denial?
No.
And that was the purpose of this tonight?
Correct. If she would have came and presented something different, then we would have looked at it differently.
So, you want an affirmative motion? You want, and a yea or an nay?
No, I would like counsel to vote no, because this is a motion to approve her request.
Motion to approve the request for an appeal, so...
Yep.
...we would like to deny that, if counsel so chooses. We are not, certainly not telling you how to vote. Are there further questions or comments regarding this? It is a voice vote, so all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, please say no.
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 Very good. The noes carry. The motion is denied. Phew. Item number three, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hart?
Move to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing of the purchase of emulsions for 2014 seal coating program.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and the hearing's now open. Madam Clerk, are there any written objections on file to us buying some emulsions?
There are none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against item number three on tonight's council agenda? A second time.
Mr. Mayor, move to close the hearing.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
Second.
I'm sorry. Counsel, do you have any questions?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt the resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid documents, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
And that's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, move to receive and file and instruct city clerk to open and read bids and refer to public works director for review.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Madam Clerk, we have two bids tonight, ladies and gentlemen, from the Two Minus Materials and Supply and from Flint Hills Resources. We do not have an estimate on this.
The first bid is from the Two Minus Materials and Supply of Des Moines, Iowa. And there's actually four different totals for HFMS-2S, the total bid is $9,900.990.00. For CRS-2P, the total bid is $121,500.121.500.00. For dilute, CSS-1, 3 to 1, the total bid is $13,950.13950.00. The next bid is from Flint Hills Resources of Dubuque, Iowa. And for the HFMS-2S, their bid is $11,568.96.1156.00. For the CRS-2P, it's $120,890.34.120.890.34. There is no bid for the dilute. And for the HFE-300, the total bid is $11,609.18.11609.18.
Very good. The amended item number four, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hart?
Do you want me to take, repossess a resolution now?
Yes, gentlemen.
I'm going to take three of them.
Sure, yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt a resolution accepting acknowledgment, settlement agreement in the amount of $1,500 with Chaudry Inc. of Five Star Snacks for sale tobacco, tobacco products, or cigarettes to persons under the age of 18 years of age. Number five, I move to adopt a resolution approving a one-year lease agreement with Willard Frost in the amount of $1,278.80 per year to farm approximately 13.9 acres of land located in and near the northeast industrial park. And six, I move to adopt a resolution approving an agreement with McGladrey LLP of Kansas City, Missouri, for audit services for the fiscal years ending June 30 of 2013 through 2015, at a base of $82,000 for 2013, $84,350 for 2014, and $86,700 for FYE 2015.
Second.
Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding four, five, or six? Roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Very good, the motion is carry. Let's do an amended seven and eight and nine, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Cole?
I move we adopt a resolution approving contract bonds and certificate of insurance with Cedar Valley Corp. LLC of Waterloo in the amount of $592,527.40 for rehabilitation of taxiway B for the Waterloo Regional Airport and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Item eight is a resolution approving an agreement with AECOM Technical Services of Waterloo in the amount of $83,800 for engineering services related to the construction phase services for the rehabilitation of taxiway B project at the Waterloo Regional Airport and authorize mayor to execute said document. And nine, also a resolution approving a grant agreement with the Iowa DOT for the commercial service vertical infrastructure program for fiscal year 2014 in the amount of $102,785 for rehabilitation of hangars at the Waterloo Regional Airport and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Madam Clerk, or Madam Cole, I'm sorry. Why don't you go ahead and take 10, too? That's another airport issue. We can just get all the airport ones.
And item 10 is a resolution approving an agreement with AECOM Technical Services in the amount of $18,600 for engineering services related to the design and rehabilitation of hangar number two and aircraft maintenance hangar number four at the Waterloo Regional Airport and authorize mayor to execute said document.
Second.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Cole. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding seven, eight, nine, or 10? Any of the four? Madam Hart, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good. The motions carry. We have an amended number 11 and 12 and 13, please. Mr. Schmidt?
Item number 11 is adopting a resolution approving an agreement with Ament Inc. of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, in the amount of $2,500 for additional design services for the fiscal year 2014, 2672 and 2736 Logan Avenue Sanitary Services, contract number 861, and authorize mayor to execute said document. Item number 12 is adopting a resolution approving professional services agreement with AECOM Technical Services Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of $77,000 for AECOM to assist the city in preparing a proposal, including estimates of costs for the transfer of jurisdiction for University Avenue, and authorize mayor to execute said document. And item number 13 is adopting a resolution approving a recommendation of award of bid to push pedal pole of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, in the amount of $350,301.14 for weight and cardio equipment for the Cedar Valley Sportsplex.
Second.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Schmidt, counsel, do you have questions or concerns regarding 11, 12, or 13?
Mr. Chair, I know we talked about this Thursday morning at the agenda meeting, but I did get some calls over the weekend, and on item number 13, I did just want to mention, the calls I got were, you know, whether or not that's taxpayer money and whether or not that's money over and above the money that we have approved for the sportsplex, and I did just want to point out, that is money, I believe, from the Winters Estate that's designed specifically for fitness equipment. So, I didn't know if Paul wanted to expand upon that, but I did just want to point that out.
Unless you want to or want him to, Mr. Schmidt, but you are correct. I mean, the Winters Foundation left money for a sportsplex, and we, to make sure that that gets spent for that, that is Winters Foundation money that is buying that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything further? Madam Clerk, the roll call votes, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Motion's carry. 14 and 15, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Welper?
I can do 16, too.
I can?
It's just a...
Oh, I'm sorry, you can, yes. Let's do 14, 15, and 16, please.
Okay. Number 14 is a resolution approving a grant agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration in the amount of $616,500 for the rehabilitation of taxiway B at the Waterloo Regional Airport and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number 15 is a resolution approving the supplemental specification of sanitary sewers and construction materials in conjunction with the municipal public works construction. Number 16 is a resolution setting the date of hearing as August 12, 2013, to approve the reallocation of $100,000 of Series 211A bond funds from the fire department's projects to be used to install a water main to be used for the fire suppression near businesses along Highway 63 South, and instruct the city clerk to publish notice. Second.
Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding any of those three?
Mr. Mayor, can I get a, can I get a copy sometime this week of all bond funds that are unspent?
I assume you can. Ms. Wiener, did you hear the question?
That are unspent?
Yep.
Yeah.
That's all.
Any further questions? Roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good. Motion's carry. Item number 17, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hart?
Move to adopt a resolution setting date of hearing as August 12, 2013, to approve FYE 2014 GO bonds not to exceed $750,000 for essential corporate purposes of said city, the proceeds of which bonds will be used to provide funds to pay cost of remediation, replacement, and improvement of property, buildings, equipment, and public facilities that have been damaged by a disaster as defined in Section 29(c)2, and that are located in an area that the President of the United States has declared a major disaster, including the relocated public works building, central garage facility, centralization project, and instruct city clerk to publish notice.
Second.
Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding 17? Madam Clerk, please, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. 18, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Greenwood?
I'll make that motion, instruct city engineer to prepare plan, specification, form of
contract, et cetera, that's for the fiscal year 2013, Burns Park drainage improvement, Phase 3, contract number 850.
Second.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Greenwood. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding item number 18? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion to receive, file plan, specification, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adopt the resolution preliminarily approving plan, specification, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Very good, it's a roll call vote, please, madam clerk.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Counsel, a relatively short agenda tonight, ladies and gentlemen, and that's the end of our regularly scheduled business, so if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the mayor or counsel on any matters of business, now's the time to do so. Please step to the microphone, give us your name, and limit your comments to three minutes, please, sir.
Randy Herod, 111 Highland Boulevard. These are not a big deal, they're just three little items. Too bad Michelle already left, but I back what she said about the 4-H Fair. My wife and I have been involved in it for 37 years, and I recommend Thursday morning is when all of you have to go, 'cause that's when the dog show is, and you can go down there and watch the kids feed their dogs. One of the other things concerns Tom's area. We had a tree removed from the parking on 100 block of Highland, and it was, it was time for it to be done. They came up, they did it, they did an excellent job, and that is a dirty, dangerous job that they did, and they worked at it several hours in a really heavy heat. These guys need a real thanks for that. They did a, they did an excellent job, and, and they had good attitudes about it. The other thing happened yesterday morning. About noon, I got a telephone call from, I guess it's the county system, that calls on emergencies to various homes, and this was about an event that had happened at 10:30 yesterday morning, where a, a young girl, about three, I believe, or that's what they were guessing, was found crossing Independence right near Highland Boulevard. She almost got hit by a car, several of the kids saw it there, none of them knew who she was, and she couldn't apparently say her name, or tell where she lived. And so, about noon, when, that happened about 10:30, about noon, the emergency call came out to my neighborhood, and so I went out to some neighbors, and there were a number of neighbors that were out, trying to figure out, you know, how we could help with this like that. My point is, is that the emergency call system does a doggone good job. This is one of the really good benefits in our community, and whoever thought it up, and the money that goes forward is, they should be thanked, and the money is well-spent, because it gets word out to people right now, 24 hours a day, 7 days a week.
Thank you, Randy. Very, very good, very good stuff, on all three. Is there anyone further, like to add anything?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
If I could, if there's nobody else. I would just like to take a brief moment to commend the Barbecue Lou Committee. They had their 12th annual Barbecue Lou this weekend, I know there were several council members down there volunteering, and several city staff, but they had a great weekend, and my understanding is they had a record year last year, and this year, they're expecting will equal or better that, so, just Cindy Wells, and the Main Street Group, and that committee, just a real big pat on the back for the great job they do getting people to downtown Waterloo.
Thank you, Steve. Well said, and, and you're absolutely right. Further?
Motion to receive and file all comments and adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Or adjourned? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.